Yes.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everybody. We will call to order the Wednesday, July 19th meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission, and we will begin tonight with the roll call.
Commissioner Cole.
Present.
Commissioner Hakenin.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Slade.
I am present, if you can hear me via teleconference, and I am using childcare as my just cause for missing tonight's in-person meeting.
Excellent. All right. So we have a physical form present in the room, so I think we're ticking all of our boxes that we're learning about before turning that up. With having one of the commissioners present by Zoom, we will need to make sure all votes tonight are by roll call instead of affirmation. All right, second item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from May 17th. We just have the one set of minutes.
I will point out that I forgot to include the April minutes that we couldn't approve of the June meeting. So those will be on.
Okay. Move to approve. Second. All right. Roll call on the approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Cole.
Wait, are we on the minutes of the agenda?
Minutes.
Everything? No?
Move to approve the minutes.
Move to approve, right?
Yes.
Second.
You said agenda.
Sorry, minutes. My apologies.
No problem.
Minutes.
Hi.
Commissioner Hakenin.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Commissioner Slade.
Hi.
All right, there we go. Words make a difference. All right, and now moving on, approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda any commissioners would like to make? The three items that we have tonight.
Two.
Okay. Okay. Vote, please.
Commissioner Cole.
Hi.
Commissioner Hakenin.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Commissioner Slade.
Hi.
All right, we will now move on to item number four, items from the floor. Any members of the public wishing to speak, may you come to the podium, please, so we can get down the recording and try to keep it just the remix.
Diane Stockness, 493 View Avenue, Trevor. So I'm here with a couple of concerns. My first one is back to when I was on the planning commission, the vegetation regulations, and that walk around town that I wanted to do, and Cheryl Kelly was ready for that too, just so we could walk around and check the vegetation with what's going on, the growth. I mean, lots of things grew, really grew with all this rain. And, you know, some are city and some are private. So the other item I have is as commissioners, I want you to look at the footprint of the community environment. Okay, so we got the new foreigner people on Edwards and Ocean, and I'm not sure that the square footage for the property, which includes the property and the structure, fit that piece of land. And when they were doing their driveway, which was done ministerial, is that right, Trevor?
Yes, it was under, under the map of the
Okay, okay. So trucks for months out there blocking the view, all their cars, they had six cars, parked along the bluff, along, you know, which is probably city property. So anyway, what I'm saying is it's just so out of
reach for Trinidad, maybe Baker Ranch or scenic or
five acres, you know, would have been a better spot for all of that, but, you know, they're new to the community. But I was upset about it. I did talk to Mercer Fraser, and I did talk to Reese and Huben, and asked them to put cones out. I also called Anton a couple of times and asked him to get Public Works to go and watch what was going on and get the cones because it's turf season. And lots, lots of cars, lots of trailers, and then coming around that corner can get pretty dangerous. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up for you to, you know, just watch what's going on, you know, and then with these ADUs, who knows what's gonna go on. So if commissioners didn't get out and walk around, please, then call the city or, you know, check the general plan and the regulations so that we you don't get overburdened with, you know, construction people or new people moving in.
Thanks, Diane. Anybody online with items from the floor? There we are. Seeing any hands raised or anybody on mute? Then we shall.
I'd like to.
Yeah, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment as a member of the public. I would just like to make a couple of comments on the new gate that's at the top of the Groff Trail. I won't get into the issue of whether or not it was permitted or not, that's not up to me. And I completely understand if the owners of the property down the road, down Groff Lane, felt that it was important to have a gate that is also their prerogative. My concern is that as long as that, at the head of Groff Lane is part of the trail system, it is now very intimidating for anyone who might want to use that trail. The sign on the gate says private property, I understand that, but there is an easement on that Groff Lane for the trail. And there is no signs that would suggest that there is a trail there at all. And so if one were to, and also, in addition to the sign, there are some stakes in the ground which one could argue blocked the trail. So I guess my feeling is, again, I'm not criticizing owners for what they're doing, but if that is to be still a trailhead, I certainly think that we should do whatever we can to make it a little more inviting for people and a little more accessible as opposed to what it is right now.
Thank you. Anybody else last call? All right, moving on then from public comment. From the floor onto item five, agenda items. First item being, item number one, Davies 2023-06. Just before we have a staff report, I did want to apologize to the applicant about our learning at the last meeting when we were learning some things about the changes of COVID rules and unfairly impacted units should not have. So at least personally for me, I'd like to offer an apology for that Glazier project, and I'm sure that doesn't feel good, and I would imagine many others have the same sentiment. Secondary to that, there is a potential recusal issue in that I just want to speak to before the staff report begins. I do own real property within the 500-foot boundary of it. I am not planning to recuse myself, I'm planning to participate in the decision tonight. And a couple of points and reasons for that. One, I have no direct financial interest in the affected parcel. I've been in contact with the city attorney, he does not believe there's a unique or disproportionate effect on development potential or use of my real property. And furthermore, if there was that concern, there are exceptions that can be made for things that affect greater than 50% of the real property in the city of Trinidad, and we're a pretty small town, within 500 feet, you easily exceed that threshold. So I feel like there's no conflict that's unique to me compared to anybody else, so I will be participating. And with that, staff report, please, Trevor.
Thank you. So let me point out, thank you, Erin, for pointing out that the zoning is all on cover page. The, the analysis of the zoning consistency is the U R zone, so the project is a new or so this project is located off Ocean Avenue. So approximately 8,200 square foot lot, a common existing two-bedroom and single-story residence. It's got a detached 864 square foot garage, and includes both a garage and storage area at this time. Parking spots off the alley view, fairly flat lot, it's got a two-bedroom septic system. Referrals were sent out for this project, no significant concerns. D E H, Division of Environmental Health staff, did discuss the second kitchen in relation to the septic system, and they don't have any additional requirements as long as it's a second unit. And although this project isn't proposing any changes in the height or footprint of the structure, it is increasing the amount of living space to more than of the 2,000 square foot guideline, includes some other external changes, so that does require Planning Commission approval, as well as under the Planning Commission's policies on detached living space as well. So those, those were adopted in April by April 2018, because this isn't an uncommon request, equalizing the state accessory structures as additional living space. And the city has allowed that in the past, but there have been issues with some of those spaces being moved to dwelling units or used as second dwelling units. And so in 2018, the Planning Commission adopted these policies. The proposed project is consistent with those policies, it's a little bit different. Normally what we see is, you know, a full bathroom but not a kitchen. This one has the whole kitchen but not a full bath, which is allowed under the policy. And the applicant has stated their reasons for wanting a second kitchen. It's not the first similar request. So the project is consistent with the zoning, it's not changing any of the structural footprints. Departing spots outside the garage will remain. The portion that is the two-car garage now is what's going to be converted into living space, and what is now the storage room will be converted into a one-car garage. There's some changes to doors. Garage door. On the two-car garage, I'm adding one on the more side, adding some windows and changing some doors around. The, the residence, it will bring the square footage of the residence up by 528 square feet. So that's 2,282 square feet, which is above the 2,000 square foot guideline. Criteria, but again, it's not changing the whole or size of the existing structures. And it's not changing the footprint, footprint is slightly above the guideline of 25% of the Planning Commission uses as well, but again, it's not changing physically just converted space. But one thing, you know, with the half bath, the proposed half bath is five by 10, which would make it easy to, you know, put in a tub or a shower in the future. So as, as a safeguard, staff has proposed that the bathroom be limited to five by five. I discussed this with the building official, who had some concerns about the full kitchen. And he agreed that that will prevent it from just adding a shower bathroom. Bathroom. And then there's some others or standard restrictions that are under the policy, the detached living space policy in terms of deed restriction limiting the, the structure to two bedrooms and one unit. Just requiring that it not be used or rented separately from the primary dwelling. No separate mailing addresses or utility meters. And the applicant to agree to periodic inspections, walk-throughs. Just making sure those conditions are still met. Project doesn't affect views. Doesn't affect parking, water, any of those issues, so it can be found to be consistent with the LCP. The design review, view protection findings are written in a manner to allow approval. As, as already noted, the external changes are pretty minor. Staff recommendation is for people with the project as condition of the staff report. You do have options to add or remove conditions of approval or delay action or continue the hearing to obtain more information or request changes from the applicant, or you can deny the project with equivalent model finding.
Questions from commissioners on the staff reports?
Yeah, so regarding the deed restriction that was put in place from the previous remodel, maybe the applicant has more information as to, like, what the planning commission at that time thought was as to why they want the bedrooms in perpetuity?
That's pretty standard. It limits what the city's been doing that actually since it's actually before my time, so before 2000. To protect septic system. So the wording is actually that the number of bedrooms or units can't be increased without city approval of a new septic. So you can, that can be removed if the septic system's upgraded. And so that was, that was required as part of an addition in, it's a 2005, but we don't have any evidence that that ever got recorded. If the applicant has, you know, a copy of the reported deed, that would suffice, otherwise.
I have a couple of questions for clarification. 17 of the packet, five of, five of page 10, yes, staff report, one, two, three, four. Fourth paragraph down, the last couple of sentences there, "This site is already connected to services and utilities, and these will not change. New or altered connections for water and sewer may be needed with a new living space." That's my understanding that based on the conditions, that there will be no additional connections.
No, no additional connections to the street, but they may need a water line, you know, to the new bathroom. From permit to see more of it.
Okay, so you're talking about on the parcel.
On the parcel itself.
Okay, okay.
I believe the, I believe the garage already has water and sewer because there's a washer and dryer in it.
Washer and dryer exists in the house. Prior to this, prior to the owner, it's
Sorry, do you mind this so we can? Get out there, I guarantee it won't be on the recording.
Garage currently doesn't have any water or sewer hookups. Prior to my ownership of the house, there was a it's in there. It's removed. Just when I yeah. Yeah, we, it's some water. Connection. To the friction. I heard you planning committee was the same reason we're asked to get perpetuity, that's fine. It's that one. Ah. Here, that. City.
It's closed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Speaking of perpetuity, just a general question. The conditions that we have put on that are currently here. Do they impact or do they, do they go with the land? And specifically what I am interested in is that condition eight, which is the applicant agrees to periodic inspections of walkthroughs. In the event, the unlikely event that Tom would like to sell the property. Is that restriction still, is that condition still there?
That's a good question. I mean, I think the idea would be that it would the condition would last as long as the life of the project, so that it would run with the land. Nothing is reported about that, though, in the likelihood of the city trying to enforce that. You know, I guess it should be disclosed to future owners. I mean, that's something the planning commission should discuss. That wasn't necessarily clear in, in the detached living space policy. Certainly you wouldn't, I mean, it's probably more likely that a future owner would convert the space than the current owner.
Oh, that was, that's what I was trying to say, is I'm not worried about Tom.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about conditions that we put on property that new owners may not have any idea exist. And I'm thinking back now, you're right, we probably should take a look at this in maybe a little bit more detail because I know that there are conditions that we put on properties that I don't know how would we ever be able to accommodate or enforce in the future with new owners.
I think it's, you know, it's one of those things that is, it's in the record, it was agreed to as part of the permit approval, it's still part of the permit. It would be probably be difficult to verify or enforce, but I think, you know, violation of a condition of a permit that was issued, you know, as consistent with the zoning ordinance would be the same as a violation of the zone. In theory.
In theory. Okay.
I think everything I had was already here. I believe in the condition I saw that the person that will draft the language of the deed restriction is the applicant, but it will need to be approved by the city attorney before getting recorded, before the permit is issued.
Yeah, we have a standard form that we use, so I will, you know, I basically, it's a template, I just insert the address, A P N, owner names. I will send that to the applicant with instructions.
So that form in essence, just looking on page, packet page 21, condition number four. Proof of this statement on the deed in a form approved by the city attorney, that's the form you're talking about, that's already been approved by the city attorney. Okay, all right. Easy. Condition number five, just to use Richard's favorite word, a little knit, it looks like extension of and be independent, there's a D that got dropped off there.
Yes.
And then I know, I see a lot of references in here to things happening before the permits are issued. Is there also a phase or accountability before the final is signed off on the property too? Is that implied? Specifically like number six, right, bathroom limited to size, no tub or shower, responsibility building inspector prior to the permit being issued. Is that also verified again by the building inspector at final inspection? As much as can be? Because to me, that seems like the point when you would actually be able to see something you're trying to keep from happening versus.
Yes, but you also don't want to stamp the building plans and allow construction. You know, so that's why it's prior to building permit being issued, because you don't want to issue a permit with that. I would assume the official, I mean, part of the final is to make sure that the plans were, you know, that what was constructed was consistent with the approved plans. So that should be a given in there?
Okay. Chris has his team. Okay, great. Oh, thank you. Chris, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna leave my camera off just for bandwidth purposes. I've got three questions for Trevor initially, and then I've got a couple of questions for the applicant as well. When the time is appropriate, but I also want to add that I couldn't hear the applicant on Zoom. Again, that could be a bandwidth issue, or maybe it's a microphone issue. So I just wanted to throw that out there. My first question for Trevor is in the staff report, you mentioned that there would be, there would likely be modifications required to the OWTS if this were to be, you know, an ADU or, you know, including or would you include a bathroom? So I guess my question for you, a full bathroom that is, is how likely would the OWTS system need to be modified if there was a three-quarters or full bathroom installed?
Well, no, well, no, the OWTS would not have to be expanded just for a full bathroom. The restriction on the full bathroom is part of the planning commission's policies on detached living space, so it can't have a full kitchen and a full bathroom. And that, the reason of that is to keep it from becoming a second unit. Because if, if two families are cooking, you know, two separate meals, that's a higher you know, waste discharge requirement as opposed to just this that's intended to be an expansion of the existing residence. So I would say, I would assume that septic upgrades would be required for sure for this to be a separate living unit. In terms of having a full bathroom, no septic upgrades would be required, it's just a system policy.
I understand. Thank you. I think you'll see in my line of questions, I share the building inspector's concern that this sort of looks like an ADU. I mean, you know, I've got family living in San Francisco, would probably pay $2,000 a month to live in that space as it's, as it's planned. So I'll have, I'll have more questions about that in just a second, but that was my, my first and perhaps most So I'll have I'll have more questions about that in just a second, but that was my my first and perhaps most pressing. Uh, my second question is maybe more appropriate for a building inspector type person, but um, if there's going to be a kitchen, especially if it's got gas appliances, uh if there's going to be some heat source in that space, and for sure, since it's going to share a wall with a garage. I'm wondering if a carbon monoxide detector is mandated in that space.
That would be a building code question, and I do not know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then my third question is related to parking. And uh sorry, Tom, if this causes uh any discomfort, but um I noticed at least last time uh that I walked through the alley. That there were two cars parked uh alongside the right of way, perhaps encroaching on the right of way. And that both of the onsite parking spots were occupied, one by a truck and camper and one by uh, a boat or utility trailer. And I'm wondering if um you know, it's mandated that there be two onsite parking spaces. And I'm curious whether the extent to which those are used should factor in our decision, because as it stands. Certainly, all available parking on the premises seems to be occupied.
Um, well, I can address that. Maybe Tom can address it, uh wants to address it as well. Um. Yeah, I mean, parking is kind of an ongoing concern. Um, and I should have um, the parking study out hopefully in the next month, or hopefully at the next planning commission meeting, a draft um to review. So that'll help put things into perspective. Um, but the regulations are two parking spaces in addition to any garage spaces. So that's what the standard is in the city, and this project does meet that. Um, you know, maybe the standard needs to be changed, although you know, the state and a lot of jurisdictions are moving towards less parking to encourage fewer cars. Um, doesn't necessarily work in a place like Trinidad that's a little bit isolated. Um, so I don't necessarily agree with that, but um but if there's a specific reason, a specific finding that, you know, you think this needs more parking, um, there is the the garage space as well. Um, you know, that that could be discussed and that is that is as a condition of approval. But as proposed, it does meet the city's parking requirements.
Okay, so as long as it's as long as it needs the park requirements, I have no further concerns about the parking.
Just just so uh just so it's clear. The the way this is being proposed is there would be one garage parking space and the two existing outside parking spaces for a total of three.
That's fair.
Okay. But nothing's changing there.
But I guess currently there's a but but the city doesn't require garage spaces. It's just two spaces in addition to any garage space, so you don't have to have.
Sorry to interrupt.
Are you uh do anything else, Chris? Or is that all?
Uh, I've got some remaining questions for Tom, but nothing about the staff report.
Okay, then uh I'd like to invite the applicant up. Tom, do you have anything you want to talk to the commission about?
Hello, can you hear me now? Can you speak here?
Uh, intermittently, the other the other microphones seem to work better. But Uh, that doesn't seem to be working particularly well either. Maybe it's the timber of your voice. I'm not sure.
How about now? I can't change the chip. I'm sorry.
Right, sure enough. Um, so 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 Erin, do I have uh do I have your blessing in asking the applicant a few questions directly?
Yeah.
Sure, so I just, uh, I think you s- sort of addressed this earlier. Um. You currently have laundry facilities in uh in your home, right? Not in the garage. They are currently in the primary residence as of this moment. Perfect, thanks. So uh would those be, I don't know, apt? Uh, because I see in your plans that there's, you know, going to be laundry facilities in the additional living space. Will your existing laundry facilities be kept or otherwise be unused going forward? Could someone translate for him? Sorry, I just can't hear him. Okay, got it. Because again, you know, I've got that concern about this being a, you know, sort of ADU like. And certainly two separate laundry facilities would be more ADU like. Uh, I think. Did you did you chat about some of the proposed features of your uh new second kitchen? Uh, I guess I'm specifically asking, you know, um, have you thought about whether there'll be electric or gas appliances? Will it be a single or double oven? Will it be a thirty two or thirty six inch oven? Um, would you describe the kitchen itself as being more commercial like in appearance and function? Or more apartment slash residential like in its uh function? Is the flour mill going out there? I just I'm just going to uh try to you know, address uh the extent to which this kitchen will support your statement that you need additional space for for baking uh artisan loaves and and canning and so on and so forth.
So here with your with your question. Actually retired and figure out what I would like to do with the rest of my life. Some maybe a cottage business at some point. Set up.
Well, you hear that okay, Chris?
Uh, not at all, but uh if you wouldn't mind paraphrasing.
No plans for commercial style stuff uh as far as appliances, most likely electric. Um, Tom recently has retired and is trying to figure out the next phase of his life. Uh, in essence, what he's going to do to uh occupy his time and currently the way his house is set up. In order to transition between, so like a better word, hobbies and activities, he has to take one down, put the other up. He's looking for a space where he can kind of leave things up and go between the different uh interests that he's pursuing. Um, and also not to perjure the option of perhaps a cottage, you know, home based kitchen kind of a thing that you know, for breads and and whatnot and not have to do things in the house that you'd rather do elsewhere.
Got it. Uh, thank you, Erin, for summarizing Tom's comments. And thank you, Tom, for your answers. I think I'm I think I'm good. I just wanted to sort of do my due diligence because indeed it does again appear on paper to look an awful lot like an ADU. And you know, the bad news is that if indeed it looks like an ADU, then you know, it might be used as one at some point in the future. But the good news is that I think that that particular space, as it's proposed, is exactly the type of ADU that Trinidad needs, right? And uh I don't know, I just wanted to maybe encourage you uh to think about you know, especially if there's going to be a cap on the number of ADUs in Trinidad. Uh, to sort of go all in on the on this project and obviously there's going to be some additional costs associated with that. But again, you know, if you're trying to sort of not just maximize the value of your home, but also sort of maximize the payoff for all of this effort, it seems like you know, going through the appropriate steps to make what looks like three quarters of ADU be a full ADU. I think would would do you a favor and might do some favors for uh for subsequent owners and perhaps the community at large. So that was my editorial comment. I'll shut up. Thanks, everybody for dealing with my uh broadband issues. Uh, and thank you, Tom, for answering the questions.
Thank you for me. Says thank you. And since you're up there, Tom, anything else do you want to share with us or?
Um, no, not really. Uh. Do you wish I had this original size of the bathroom? But I had some back storage type air. Suppose it cut down to five by five. My question is maybe for Trevor also. If that condition still exists, I would give new a new drawing for the building.
Yeah, um, so uh, you would submit your building plans and that meet these conditions, and then the building inspector sent them to me and I feel to make sure that it meets conditions. Um. Maybe you can put in a big closet behind the bathroom uh for
Yeah, something that could
You'll have to ask the building officials.
Okay. Oh. That did not appear on my exterior drawing. Wall that faces the house where this thing door. Right there.
West elevation.
Yeah, on the west side, yeah, and there's a currently a door on there. Thing already. Might as use construction that's our Thanks.
With that, I'll open it up for public comments. Public comment on the project. Seeing any online? And I'm not seeing any in the room. I will bring it back to the commission. Any further questions, discussion?
Um, I don't have any further questions. I did want to discuss some of the big conditions that were um posed. Uh, I think for the most part, I mean I'm fine with the project or in favor of the project. Um, I did have some concerns about condition six regarding the size of the bathroom. Um. I guess I mean, five by five is not a very large bathroom. He wants a larger bathroom. And I also think um if I don't have the inclination that Tom wants to turn this into an ADU, but if he wants to turn it into an ADU, like making the bathroom five by five is not going to stop him. He can like build space, build a five by five bathroom, then knock down the wall and put a tub later without a permit. Um. And so I think we should we should give him a larger bathroom because that's what he wants. And then, you know, I think what's fair is like ensuring that there's not the plumbing place for a tub or a shower or something like that when the inspector goes through, but I don't think we need to reset the size of the bathroom.
I also wanted to talk about condition eight, but maybe we should talk about condition five first, that anyone else has thoughts on that. Or six, great.
Or excuse me.
Six, yeah. Richard, Chris, any thoughts on Chris' proposed change to leave the bathroom in essence as it is, which is five by ten on the submitted plans? Is that correct, Trevor? Clear, Tom.
Yes.
Five by ten.
It could be, as Chris had mentioned, maybe amended so that instead of you know, you could take out the first sentence and then no tub or shower or plumbing. But that's what it says, and just take out the first sentence.
My concerns about striking the first line of condition six.
Well, again, if you go back to then, um, what um needs to be put on the stick uh the deed. The restriction, excuse me.
You could add not having a pullback in the detached space to the deed restriction.
Um, I I guess what I would like to do is but we talked about eight. See, that's my problem. I don't know what runs with the land and what doesn't.
I would say these all run with the land. Uh, as long as the permit is was implemented and and is in place, as long as that space remains living space, these conditions are in effect.
Well, if that's the case, then I would be okay with modifying six as long as eight remains in there as well as a condition.
Chris, any comments?
Uh, I don't have any specific comments, except to say that it all seems rather unenforceable, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, um. I echo that. I think that the greater issue is the enforceability um in the accountability piece. And you know, when the when the transfer of the property happens between owners, there's from what I mean, I have no concept of what conditions there were with the construction of my place, nothing was. So I mean, that's the greater issue that shouldn't hold up this application, but it's certainly one that I I would love to see is revisit uh just conceptually. Um, I don't have any issue with uh eliminating that line on on item six, because I had a question where that five by five came from. Um, but I'm fine.
It would it would preclude putting in a even a shower, uh according to the building. Um, but that would, you know, the the deed restriction, it's not an enforcement tool so much as it is a disclosure to break. Um, and so that is the purpose of the deed restriction. So you could consider adding some of these further to the deed restriction. Not that I necessarily advocate putting more things on the deed, but that's the purpose is the disclosure. And I guess one other layer that we have now that I'm finding is you know, with the OWTS permitting, um, is that that's another layer. Um. Where these kind of conditions, I note them on um the OWTS permits, like house is limited to three bedrooms, detached living, you know, so this is also something I could um you know, include these conditions on the, or at least the bathroom one could can be to include on the OWTS permit. Um, and certainly that it's one unit and two bedrooms um would be on the OWTS permit. So that's another disclosure tool because those get um certainly the realtors seem to be pretty on top of getting that information to buyers.
Okay, um, I don't really have anything else.
Um, can, okay, then maybe we, well, okay, then can I can we discuss um condition eight regarding getting the periodic inspections? That's in, so that is also, to be clear, in perpetuity. Um. I guess my understanding is that Tom is tend to agree to that already. Um. But I, in my opinion, that seems a little overreaching in terms of the city's um enforcement. Uh, and I and I understand that like enforcing a lot of these conditions is very difficult, um especially moving into a new ownership. Um. But also at the same time, like I feel like if somebody is like determined to create an illegal or unpermitted ADU, they're probably going to make it happen when we're together. But um I guess I just look at number eight, though, in terms of periodic inspections. And I think like if that was my house, like I don't really want city inspecting my house.
So someone should have an issue with owner at level periodic a week. You know what I mean? It's this, it's um seem like thing to issue that I have with that. Like if it was year.
City walk. She have that. That's right. It should be a word. Um, with the, with commission, I mean, I don't know how, how the other commissioners feel, or it sounds like, Richard, you're in favor of that, um, condition, but I'm not sure about the others. I mean, I think one ground could be just like inspections not to exceed once per year or something like that might be more. Valuable.
What are your thoughts?
Well, the philosophy for a long time in Trinidad has always been build now and beg for forgiveness. And I've been here long enough to have to, I can look at multiple properties where we have and as it was not done, uh, or the, or. So, uh, I, I completely understand the issue of, uh, periodic is arbitrary and capricious. Um, and I would, um, certainly, uh, I would modify it to say something to the extent, I'm just kind of free wheeling here. I don't know if I had the right words, but something to the effect that, um, an inspection would only be required if necessary or something like that. Doesn't have to be periodic, but there have been some examples, um, but let me rephrase it. A lot of what happens in Trinidad is also complaint driven. And so if there's no complaint, uh, typically that's probably okay. But, um, so I, I think that, uh, flexible in terms of bring to something to the effect that only if necessary. Something I, like I said, I don't have the right words. Feel free to call something there.
On, on that topic, um, I'm just, you know, referencing the planning commission policy that was adopted in two thousand and eighteen, which is where this came from, right? And so you know, I want to make sure that we're respectful of that policy and that we're not making one time exception change. You, you know what I mean? Uh, I too feel that that's a very vague and speaks to a greater issue, um, of what, what is the standard of, of requiring inspection, necessity. Since that kind of stuff. So I'm wondering, maybe as a way through, could we condition something? Um, applicant to agree to inspections, walk through by city building inspector with twenty five hour notice. In accordance with the planning commission policy on detached living space, standard conditions. And then as a commission, we can come back to the guiding policy and at a future meeting. I know there's a little bit of wiggle room in the interim here, but I don't think anybody's ready to go running. Okay. I think that could get us there because I feel like the bigger issue is what rises to the standard of an inspection. I don't know if that would be a way forward.
Well, unfortunately, uh, standard condition number four is exactly what's here.
But you could go back and change the policy.
That's what I mean.
And that's what I'm saying. Refer to the policy and the condition for tonight.
Oh, I see.
And then at a future meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Come back to the policy and let's get that written in a way that we feel protects both entities, right? The property owner and the city.
Got it.
Uh, that's kind of what I'm suggesting.
I mean, yeah, I'd be happy to revisit the policy, um, later, but not too much. So that, yeah, I, I mean, I understand. Yeah, it is in the policy and, um, get that one. Exceptions here willing.
Yeah, yeah. And I would like to add, I think, what I said earlier, to reiterate that I think we really need to have a discussion on how conditions become either deed restrictions or what, and get that clarified because I, I, I think I understand what you're saying, Trevor, but I'm just not completely convinced that it's robust enough to, um, serve as direction for new owners. So I maybe combine the two into a discussion.
I, I like, I like the suggestion of referring to the policy and then going back and refining that policy.
So does eight become something like applicant to agree to inspections per policy number of so and so? To as simple as that?
Yeah, I would say since we don't have our policies numbered at this point, um, we would just refer to planning commission policy on detached living space and their conditions.
Chris, any, uh, input one way or the other on that suggestion?
Uh, it seems reasonable. I have no detailed comments.
Okay. Does that work, Tristan?
That works.
Okay. Um, so then, as I understand changes to the proposed conditions, then, uh, number six, again, we're striking out the very first sentence. And then number eight, we're gonna reword it to the effect of the intent being agreed to periodic or to inspections, walk-throughs in accordance with the planning commission policy on detached living structures. And then we can cover that for future agenda items later tonight. With that, is there anybody willing to make a motion?
Uh, I move that we approve the project. All of the sins afterward mentioned, um, and which is in the packet, um, including striking first sentence of condition six and the modifications to condition eight.
A second.
Commissioner Cole?
Hi.
Commissioner Hickman?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
All right.
Commissioner Slade?
No.
Oh, Tom, are you there?
Yes.
Did, did you, did you want to vote on this or abstain?
First question, Tom, are you participating?
No, no, I'm not abstaining. I'm abstaining. But thank you.
Okay. And just a clarifying question for me, Tom, are you participating in the meeting tonight or wanting to as a commissioner or are you just as a member of the public, just for our?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just listening in and I did not get the, uh, gone to the website. I haven't been able to get the, the packet. I'm way far away.
Perfect.
And so I'm just listening in and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
All right. Okay. For the record, uh, Tom Hopkins is present online, but is being viewed as a member of the public tonight. Okay. So, all right, that's it with the agenda item number one.
Yes, I will. I'll send you a little note with the list of the conditions and what you need to do.
To item number two. Afterboard please.
Thank you. So this is actually a two-part item. Um, one is an amendment to the planning commission's approval of, um, mitigation and repair work for, um, erosion on a Parker Creek Trail and Axalindrum Memorial Trail and along Old Home Beach. And then, um, as well as an update, um, based on your approval of the temporary trail closures. So two, two items for that. Um, so the the repair work at the base of Parker Creek Trail, um, and then the, the Jeep matting along the base of the bluff on Old Home Beach. Um, as well as the barrier fences at the upper and lower ends of Axalindrum Memorial Trail. Um, were all installed, um, the week before Memorial Weekend so that Parker Creek Trail can be reopened. And the city was not yet ready to install the fencing along the beach. So it was also, um, proposed. Uh, the planning commission did approve all those elements, but, um, the approval only included one fence at the lower end of the Axalindrum Memorial Trail. So either the fencing along the beach or the fencing at the lower end of the trail. Um, when the fencing along the beach was installed, it did go across the base of the trail on the beach. So um, both fences are currently there inconsistent with the planning commission's approval. Um, the, the, um, the planning commission's action was discussed at a management team meeting the following week. Um, the, the management team as well as city staff agreed that both fences should, um, be placed. There's a couple of reasons for this. One is the base of the Axalindrum Memorial Trail still could look like a trail, which then would encourage people to go over the fence along the beach so that they could access this trail that they could see, um, unless there was a barrier across that as well. Uh, so that was a potential concern. Um, the other issue that came up is that the the fencing on the beach has to be removed by September thirtieth. Um, but the Axalindrum Memorial Trail may not be open by then. And so it would make sense to not have to take out and reinstall this fence on the lower end. That's just more, more ground disturbance, more people plodding along. Um, and then in the meantime, um, it, the, uh, public work staff did observe an instance where the upper fence had been pushed aside and, um, a couple of people had gone down the trail when public work staff went to inspect. It was a, it was a, you know, grandma and a child. And so probably not the people who moved the fence at the top, but still they were there at the bottom of the fence trying to decide what to do. And if that fence hadn't been there, they might have climbed down over the Jeep matting and disturbed that and caused more erosion. So another reason just to leave the trail, you know, people would turn around and go back. Um, it's really, I provided some photos that were taken of the site, what it looks like now with the vegetation grown in. You really can't see that, that fence at the lower end of the trails. And I don't think it's a, a visual, um, you know, it's not a visual issue, which was, I think, the reason that the planning commission didn't want it is just, you know, that much more um, kind of visual structure and obstruction, um, in that open space area. Um, so um, staff is recommending that the same findings, um, from the original staff report, um, can be made and would recommend that you approve the modification. Um, to the proposal so that both fences, um, can remain, um, with the, still with the condition that the fence on the beach will be removed by September thirtieth. Questions?
I had just a numbering question before we get into detailed questions. Um, I see this is number twenty twenty-three dash oh five A. I was just curious how that fits in with our approval, which was A, B, C, D, the night of. And would this necessarily be B, which was the section specific to the, um, Axalindrum or?
The A is referring to, it's an amendment to.
Okay.
Sorry, that's not clear.
Now it is. Thank you. Okay. I'm just curious on that. Right now, then, are there any questions from the commissioners?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify the signage. Are the, I, I know that there is a, uh, in your photograph on page forty-one. The lower the lower fence, the beach fence, I guess I'll call it, um, there is a sign there. Is that the sign that was, uh, for preventing people to be on the fence or is a S sign?
Um, maybe Eli can clarify, but I believe that's fence the same area closed. Um.
My, my point is I just want to make sure that we're consistent with the messaging on the signs. So there's three signs. I just want to make sure they all say the same thing.
Yeah, kind of the signs would be saying the same. Uh, and as far as the T A S sign, uh, they're bringing it over tomorrow morning. That's the plan. At eleven o'clock to be installed at the top of the Axalindrum Trail.
So these are all just trail closed signs?
Right.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but, um, I mean, as a comment, I guess, given that the trail was, uh, where the, the, the steep scarpe of the, at the bottom of the trail, um, was covered up with Jeep mat and logs and everything such, um, I mean, when I've walked by there, it doesn't really look like there's a trail there anymore. Uh, so I guess the argument that like it was a trail and we didn't want people to use it doesn't have traction. However, the argument for when we're needing the fence there at as of September thirtieth, um, that beach fence comes down. And you get that because people break up there, they can walk right up to it. Um, it was, so it's just a, it's just a comment on, on that part, on the justification, I guess, um.
Chris, did you have anything?
I've got, uh, I think three quick comments, none of real substance. Uh, the first was just that, um, I don't think we had really considered it in the past, but I noticed this weekend that all of this fencing is visible from, uh, the pier and sort of the, the far end of, of Launcher Beach. So I just wanted to mention really quickly that as we consider, as we continue to consider, uh, fence issues, uh, we're aware of the fact that the fence is visible from places. Um, besides Old Home Beach. That's my first comment. My second comment, perhaps the most relevant is that I think it's fine. It looks pretty well concealed as it stands. The, the fence at the bottom of the trail is strung between some trees or pretty dense shrubs. So I think that it's fine. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, however, is that it's probably time to start thinking about removal of that, uh, that fence on the beach. I was there as the fence was being installed and, uh, joked with the, with the city, um, employees there who are installing it about removing it. And, uh, they, they mentioned that it's going to be pretty hard to haul of that fencing up the hill. So I just want to start thinking about logistics of getting that fencing removed. You know, maybe via barge or something. I don't know, but it's going to be tricky logistically to get that done. And, you know, like I said, I was there. Uh, just as, as installation of the beach fence was wrapping up and I didn't see a cultural monitor there. So I did, I saw in the staff report, um, you know, a statement that a cultural monitor was present, uh, but not for the entire duration of the installation of that beach fence. So I just wanted to mention that really quickly. Otherwise I've got nothing else to contribute.
I, um, I, I made my comment. It was about the safety, sorry, the closure signs. Um, I don't. You know, one could argue whether or not this is the exact approach that we should take, but that's an editorial comment. And, uh, I think, uh, our focus at this point, uh, certainly should be what we can do to make this a better trail. So.
Now I just had, uh, one question. It's not clear to me, because I didn't realize the beach fencing had finally been installed. Um, does it actually return back, Trevor, to effectively including access on the, on the, and the tail ends, if you will, the left and the right side?
I'm, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay. I just couldn't tell that from the pictures. I ran out of time today to run down there. Um, my other comment, I don't feel as relevant anymore. So that's all I have. Uh, welcome up any public comments on this issue? that's all I have. I want to know if any public comments on this issue? In the room, anybody online? Seeing any? Go ahead and bring it back to the commissioner.
I'll make a motion then, based on the application.
I was trying to find it.
Oh, okay. Based on the application materials and information included in this staff report and based on the public testimony, I find that the project is consistent with the city certified and other applicable regulations, and I move to adapt the information and findings to the staff report and approve the project segments as described below and as conditioned hearing.
I'll second if I'm permitted.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but what was the question? If he can second remotely. I don't see why not.
All right, then I'll second it.
Commissioner Cole.
Hi.
Commissioner Hakinen.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
And Commissioner Slay.
Hi.
Before we move on, Trevor, I just wanted to clarify. So then the the update you've provided then, kind of at the opening, or is that going to be a separate thing now?
I was going to provide an update next.
Perfect, okay. All right, so then we'll we'll pause for that update then. Thank you.
I mean, not that I have a lot to add that wasn't already in that staff report. The management team has not met since May 31st. We did discuss the Planning Commission's decision, including its request to, you know, look at temporary repairs to the Axalingra Memorial Trail to get it open before potentially rerouting it because that that will take more time. So that was brought up, but there has not been any additional meetings or communications since that time. The GHD report is expected to be out this month, I believe. And so that will hopefully be soon and that will provide impetus for another management team meeting. Eli, do you have anything to add?
Can, what exactly is the this GHD work study?
I believe it's looking at alternatives for rerouting the trail. So it's sort of feasible. It's like a feasibility report.
Eli, you had mentioned to me when I was in August last or a couple times ago. You you said made it sound like there was some sort of a plan to for a new for the new trail down there or something like that. Said that I might be impressed by it. I wouldn't sure if you had more details on that or something.
Oh, actually, I I was talking, I believe I was mentioning about the Parker Creek Trail.
Okay.
That that the the way that the trail now goes down, I I think is a much better improvement than the way it did before.
Sure.
And and I, I mean, the four, the whole four years I've been here, it's been where it's at, the the trail. But I got the impression that before that large log had fallen over there, that it probably continued where we, once we removed the log and had that more gentle approach, I I would think that maybe that was what it was. At least that's my impression. Because otherwise, the 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 way that people were accessing the beach was more steep and was also muddy. So so this this one is a much more gradual slope. Yeah, otherwise, the the other thing is, as far as Axalingra Memorial Trail, yeah, it's up to what GHD, you know, will propose. Steve Allen's working on that. That's called the Seventh Generation Grant that the that JRI Incestral Society has obtained. It's the sign that's going to be up tomorrow.
Now, if the GHD studied, that like a temporary?
I I don't think it did.
You're saying temporary?
Like a more immediate temporary.
Oh, yeah. No, ideally, it would be maybe what we would call like a mid-range plan. You know, so something, I mean, the long term because of coastal resilience plan that we're working on separately, will be addressing sea level rise and coastal erosion. And and there, I think it's going to require something over time, but the the medium range thing would be hopefully 20 to 50 years. That's what we're hoping. The long range would be 100.
It might provide a range of alternatives that might include, you know, shorter than.
I'll ask a specific question, I guess. You said that you did bring up, as we requested, the concept of a a short-term interim solution to reopen, at least in the pre-existing footprint with a recognition long term. And I guess my my question is, can you speak to the reaction? Was it of of the body? Because it's it's one of these things where we've made, it's it's of great interest, I think, to many of the commissioners, and I want to make sure that was just asked. I'm just curious, can you speak to the reaction in the room? Or is it that the agenda is future? I don't know how these meetings.
Yeah, I think it was, you know, my recollection, Eli, you can correct me or add. But it really wasn't discussed. It was mentioned more in passing than that this would be something that that the city would like to discuss in the future, and it was not discussed at that time. You know, in the limits of time in the meeting that we had.
Yeah, and at least the impression I've gotten, I I think a lot of reliance is going to be on the GHD report and just basically to see what they come up with and what might be feasible. But whatever it is, at least my hope, and and I'll try to push forward, is that by next May, one way or another, whether it's a short term or or whatever, that somehow the trail would be open so that in after Memorial Day, just like we got Parker Creek open this year, I I would feel that we should, at the latest, have it reopened by next year. Whether it's a short-term improvement or a modification to the toe of the trail.
Okay, I guess I would just request that the staff continues at these meetings, at every meeting, to to bring up the interest of the Planning Commission in a temporary solution to get it open. You know, recognizing that long term, the goal, as I understand, is to potentially realign the trail and do some some significant work that will take time with you know, the hope of the Planning Commission is that there's work to be done to open it at least temporarily in the existing location. We understand that that's just for now and that whatever GHD comes up with, because I believe I also heard Trevor say that the GHD plan is not looking into a temporary, short-term, what can we do to maybe reopen it next month or, you you know, that kind of a thing. So I just want to make sure this doesn't fall off. Because that's an important trail to the community, and I think we've heard that loud and clear.
One comment that was made at the meeting, and some of the other management team members may not have seen the trail, but Sarah Lindgren had indicated that she was surprised of the condition of the trail, meaning like the steps. It says that the the steps were not in as good of a condition that she would have had had hoped for. So that might be an issue, in other words, to to try to improve those before it's open. That's the impression I got from how it was addressed at the meeting.
I just wanted to point out that I I believe that the trail is actually no longer closed as of November.
Right, that's correct. I mean, yeah. So hopefully, the GHD report will, you know, give us some insight so that you guys can make the right decision. But yeah, that's correct.
Public comment on the or questions for the update on that work? Yes, Jackie, please, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to, and I know the Planning Commission does not have authority over the tri management team. But just to bring forth the tribal council, Trinidad Rantria Tribal Council's efforts to be part of of that tri management team, and that is an ongoing case that is is actually moving forward. What I would request is notification of any tri management team meetings. There should be a public open meeting for discussions. And also, we should be receiving any correspondence regarding the GHD report or any other information regarding the trail. So while, you know, this case is moving forward, I I won't comment any further than that, but I think the notifications to the tribe are not happening. So anything to do with the trail or the tri management team, the the tri Trinidad Rantria should be notified of those actions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, then I think we're done with the agenda item number two. All right, moving on to number three, the ADU ordinance.
I'm sorry, Eric, may I speak in one more?
Thank you.
Could we, could we request that that staff provides that GHD report in one of the upcoming updates? Just so that it is readily accessible to anybody who has access to the packets?
That, that, um, so it's not the city's report. So you know, it's not up to the city to make that public, I don't think. So we'll have to probably get permission from the Incestral Society to share that, I would think.
Got it.
Yeah, I'd have to check with our attorney just to be on the safe side.
Because the city's the property owner, right? Allowing the work to be done on their property. So I would think, but yeah, let's check with the city attorney.
Well, I mean, we would have to review it come November.
Ideally, yeah.
I would assume some version of it, you know, maybe some things are redacted or something.
Of course, I understand that. But I mean, there will be a discussion on their proposed trail design.
I guess I'm not sure what's going to happen yet at this point.
Well, I I, you know, I mean, the bottom line is you've given or closed the trail for six months so that it will reopen in November, which means that ideally, the report would be shared, at least part of it or whatever, with the Planning Commission to help you determine whether or not it should be closed any longer.
That's worth kind of front-loading the expectations with all the party involved at your meetings?
Okay, so I guess I have a process question, and it was my understanding this had to come back to the planning.
Well, it does if we want to keep the trail closed. Otherwise, it's just going to reopen in November. The temporary closure will expire. So so the temporary closure was approved for six months. I forget the exact date in November, and it will expire unless the Planning Commission extends that.
I, okay, I I thought it in that same decision that it was also that any design change, any design or modifications to the trail would come back to us.
Well, they would. I mean, they would have to go through a permit process, yeah.
Well, okay, that's that's it just took me sure. Boating blindly in that space, okay.
All right, Chris, anything else?
Nope. All right, need to derail the discussion from that.
No, thank you for, I have to remember to turn my head to the right of the screen. Take all the help I can get. All right, so moving on to agenda item number three. Trevor?
Take us away.
So, gosh, it seems like ancient history last time we reviewed this. So it took so let's see. Oh, yeah, 2012. But no, this this most recent iteration of the ordinance, the the city got some grant funding, SB2 grant funding from HCD to develop and adopt a new ADU ordinance. We did develop a one in, we were 2020 and 2021. And then we got it to a point where we wanted to get feedback from coastal commission staff before going any further. So I submitted that to coastal commission staff. It's taken quite a bit of time to get comments from them. I think maybe six or eight months for the first set of comments, and then it took me some time to respond to them. And then since December 22, we've been, I've been having monthly meetings with coastal commission staff to discuss LCP updates and LCP grant that we have. Mostly, we've actually been discussing this ADU ordinance. So there's still a few things to work out, but with the end of the SB2 grant, I wanted to get this back to you. It's in, I think, a pretty close to final format. Coastal Commission staff has also been working with HCD staff. So HCD, under the state law, does have some review authority over local ADU ordinances. And so sometimes it's a little bit of a a negotiation between coastal commission staff and and HCD staff in terms of, you know, coastal resource protections. Parking is is an issue that that comes up fairly often in terms of deviations from from the state standard. So so I, you know, I just, it's, it's a long ordinance. It's fairly complicated. But if you can kind of put it in this framework of there's sort of tiers of ADUs and and ADU permits depending on where you are and, you know, what what your ADU entails. There are JADUs, there are ADUs. Basically, the state standard is that if if ADUs meet these certain checkboxes, you have to approve them ministerial. And that means no discretion, no public hearing, no planning mission. Under the Coastal Act, things are a little bit different because you have to have public hearings. That's the one exception in the state law to the Coastal Act is that you don't have to have public hearings. So so we have this, so there's a ministerial ADU permit. And then if you meet all the checkboxes, and then if you want a bigger one, for example, or that doesn't meet all these standards, there's certain standards that you can deviate from and get a used permit for. So that's sort of the normal permit process. And then on top of that, we've got the coastal development permit process. So we have in this ordinance, it sets forth provisions for a ministerial coastal development permit process. And then that that meet certain checkboxes again. And then we also worked on provisions for an administrative CDP process that where I would, I could issue a CDP, it gets reported to the Planning Commission, and it's still appealable. But it 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 streamlines the process a little bit. And then, or you can get a a standard sheet. And some of it's going to depend, like I said, on what your ADU looks like, but a lot of it's also to depend on where you are in the city. So I I think it would be really helpful to have that visual of a map, so I'm I'm working on that. Because it's really going to be, it's going to be a small area of the city that's going to be subject to ministerial. You know, part of that's going to be because OWTS upgrades are going to be required almost always. And so that's, that's really where we got into a sticking point with the coastal commission, because I wanted to have some, you know, some sort of exception or exemption for certain OWTS repairs and upgrades. And and they won't even allow it for for repairs, you know, even of the same size. It's, they're, they're, they're pretty strict on this. And actually, for the very first time in the city, I told someone they needed a CDP for an OWTS repair. Personally, because of the location. But you can get an administrative permit. But the, that's only outside the appealable area, which in Trinidad is very small. It's really. We we tried to get them to designate Underwood as the first public road between the the sea. But it's because it dead ends. It's not, so Trinity. So really, the only area that's going to be not appealable is basically Hector and West, East, and then, you know, Trinity, East. Hector and West, um, East, and then, you know, Trinity, East, not seeing it, and not up the creeks, not up the creek. So it's going to be a pretty small area. Um, and then there's also this. It's even it's very nuanced. It's even stricter actually than our zoning ordinance. So the general plan says you can't put in septic systems and improvements within the unstable or questionably stable areas or within 100 feet of those areas um, without a geologic report. In our zoning ordinance, you only need a geologic report if you're in an unstable or questionable area and not within a hundred. But the coastal commission is saying for them to find this ordinance consistent with that with that general plan policy, we also have to. So again, that unstable, questionable stable area is that's going to be most. So, um, so anyway, because I think, you know, people are going to be concerned about proliferation of ADUs. Um, but I think again, it's it's going to have to go through some process and a lot of. Um, so I think that'll alleviate some concerns. I think, um, you know, we we mostly follow the the state requirements except for the coastal resource protection. So 100 feet of ESHA is within 100 feet of unstable areas. Um, within 125 feet of the block is what we agreed on because that's what they did for Minnesota County. Um, um, so there's those and, you know, within ESHA block public access. So there's those, um. The other deviation that we're looking at is a little bit with with parking. So there's a few streets in town that don't have own street parking like Wagner. Um, that if people had to go park on Ocean or Edwards, um, instead of Wagner, it could affect public access. Um, so we're looking at that. And then really, the the one thing I think that might be a real issue is the new height requirements that just went into effect in 2003. It's really too bad we couldn't have sorted this through. Or that, and we would have been safe with that. Um, but yeah, and for an ADU that's attached, it should be 25 feet regardless of how big primary unit is. That's kind of a scary thought for who's Trinidad. So so I'm also talking to the coastal commission about, um, you know, can they or should they make findings about character, you know, visual character of the community? Because that is a coastal coastal act does protect, um, eight coastal communities um, and public use sheds. So we're we're looking at that. Um, and and then again, even if that doesn't, even if we can't bring that down, it's still going to apply to only a very limited amount of area of the town. So so anyway, I it's a so I intended this as sort of an introduction. Um, you know, it's, we we did include a cap on the number of ADUs. So that that 36 is is an estimated build out. So, um, you know, I I took the the lots that met the minimum lot size, assuming that you're not going to get a septic system for two units on anything smaller than that. And it's at a quarter of those. And, you know, 10% is usually a high, a max for the number of people that want an ADU or that build an ADU. So I I think that's probably a an overestimate of the number that we would ever have in Trinidad. Um, but it helps the coastal commission make their findings in terms of water and septic capacity. And HCD has seemed to agree with that. Um, that's an approach that coastal commission has taken with other ordinances. Um, and then it goes through the the layers of permits and then coastal resource protection standards, public health and safety requirements, those fire sprinklers, things like that, and and the septic system is there as well. Um, and then you've got general standards that apply to both JADUs and ADUs. Um, and then you have development standards specific to ADUs, development standards specific to junior ADUs. And then, and then we have the permitting procedures. Then the ministerial CDP procedures. And then some provisions for dealing with existing ADUs. So that's sort of a overview and outline of the ordinance. I'm happy to take comments and questions. I'll be meeting with coastal commission staff again next week, so I can bring your comments and any questions to them as needed.
Any general questions or do we want to go through page by page? Questions. Okay, thanks, Trevor, for backing this.
I had just one general question. The, um, map you're developing, and I believe it was part of the water surveys was that work where you kind of were discussing future buildup for water needs, the future ADU potential was accounted for in that in that.
That's right. That's right.
So is it possible to on that map or on a separate map? Also, so we can see where the sites you've identified as most likely, understanding it's not 100%.
Okay, so lots that meet the mill on.
Right, just so we can get an idea where would these things be? And it would be for me helpful to have that on that same map that also has kind of however you're going to make this crazy color scheme thing, which is a J, you know, the appealable and all those types of things. So maybe it's just be one big blob of color with a very small section where it's not. That was it for that.
All right, anything on the page one of the staff report packet, page 59?
Did you ask Chris, sorry?
And in general, Chris, before we dive in?
Uh, we're going page by page through the staff report first, is that correct?
Yes.
Not the ordinance itself? Okay, then, uh.
I was going to do both, kind of.
Fair enough, but in that order. Um, just because I can't see it at the moment, I just wanted to ask Trevor about that 36 number. Uh, how that was settled on?
Yeah, so that was, um, in 2018, I believe it was, we were looking, I did a build out assessment of of Trinidad and the Trinidad's Water Service area to look at water use at future build outs. Um, and so I had to estimate, you know, potential build out for for these areas, you know, based on zoning, um, certainly for primary units. For second units, it was a little tougher. Um, septic limitations are probably going to be the biggest limiting factor. So I only counted lots that met the minimum lot size, assuming that, you know, you're not going to be able to get a a big septic system, big enough for two units, um, on anything smaller than that. And then I just took a quarter of those. So that should, it should be an overestimate. I saw 10% as sort of a, you know, maximum a maximum of the number of ADUs that are normally found in a community. Um, so 25% should be an overestimate. And then and then the idea is that if we get to 36, we'll revisit that number.
Got it. Thank you. Just one more quick general comment, um, which I don't think will come as as much of a shock is that we're going to need a lot of public input, right? Um, I don't know how many people are in the room. Uh, I said there's, you know, a fair number on Zoom, but but while I acknowledge that this is just an introduction to the issue, boy, it'd be really nice to have the most like the the highest possible amount of community involvement and community feedback on this, um, before it's essentially too late. So whatever avenues we have for maximizing engagement, I'd like to explore those avenues. Thanks.
Now, I think we're good with the staff report, move into the proposed amendment here. Page one of the amendment, anything on there?
This might be a nit, and again, I hesitate to say that I probably repeating myself uh, from previous discussions, but, um, down under the new section 17 dot oh eight dot three six five, bottom of the page, uh, we say juvenile septic dwelling unit or JADU means a unit. Is that, is unit defined elsewhere?
No, I don't think it is. I think that's a good point.
Um, I think I know what it is.
It ought to be a dwelling unit because dwelling unit is defined.
It is defined, yeah. Um, that'd probably make more sense, yeah.
Right, anything on page two?
Now, I, uh, yeah, uh, under 17 dot oh eight dot three, 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 seven, seven, living area. Uh, I I understand the intent there. Uh, I'm a little worried, though, that, uh, when we say habitable, that that needs to be criss up a little bit. And typically, what I think I've seen in the past is any areas which are conditioned, that means either heating or cooling of some sort as opposed to just habitable. I mean, some people could live in some unusual circumstances, so.
And and that is the intent. I believe that's from the building code. Um.
Habitable is?
Yeah. Um, it's certainly this is from other ordinances, but let me, I will look into that.
Habitability is definitely a thing. It's it's definitely a California state law, or it appears in California state law anyway, habitability.
Yeah, because I think there are, um, yeah, I mean, there are, yeah, building code standards for what is habitable and some like to condemn something to consider not how things like that. Yeah, we'll look into that.
Moving on to page three. Page four. Page five.
I had one. Um, right in the middle of the page, letter C, Arden Meteor DDO associated new development should not be permitted on a property with known arch resources. Can that can that be reworded to say like cannot be permitted so that it impacts archaeological resources? I guess my thought is like, if it's on a parcel that has known archaeological resources, then you know where those archaeological resources are.
Potentially. So I think, so this is where some of this gets a little difficult to wrap your head around. Um, or I've had trouble, anyway, speak for anyone else. Um, so so exceptions, so this is for the ministerial. So you if you can't be located on a on a property with archaeological resource and get ministerial approval. Because if you look at EF, you can, if you are on one of those, then you just have to get a standard CDP. So that because with the ministerial, the thing with the ministerial approval is you can't add conditions like have a cultural monitor on site. So the idea is that you go through the standard process and then you add that condition, you can have the ADU, but you have a cultural.
Well, I I I also had a question with the same one, and I I don't understand, where is that documented?
Uh, we don't, I mean, we don't have a map, no. I mean, we have some, we have a variety of old archaeological studies that have been done around town. Um, I know of at least one where some resources were found. Um.
Well, there is like the.
The North Coast Information Center, yeah.
Like that, no one's required to paint them.
Yeah, and and anything is going to be within quarter mile or, you know, or whatever in Trinidad. Um, so, yeah, so that could be broaden known cultural resources near. We could think about rewording that. Um, I think I I think we're, I think we're heading towards eventually, I mean, almost any project in Trinidad with soil disturbance is going to require a cultural monitor.
Yeah, it it, to me, um, you know, I guess what I'm trying to do is to protect someone who decides that they want to do an ADU.
They don't know.
And they don't know, and that can be very expensive, difficult. Uh, right now, I wouldn't have any idea where to go to understand what the, um, archaeological resources would be or or where. Yeah, I wouldn't have any idea. I mean, I understand your your point, though, that most likely, in almost all situations, we would have to have a cultural monitor, but, uh, you got for that. So, okay.
No, I think this is, um, you know, I think we should probably have a discussion with the tribes on this.
Sure. Another comment here, and and it's, I just happened to circle it on this page in, uh, letter E, where we say that any associated new development may not interfere. Once again, it's back to the may versus shall. And could you just reiterate, this is now the new, this is now the new word that takes the place of shall? Is that right? Does I understand it?
Yeah, it's interesting. The, that's a good question, and I will ask. Uh, that's a, that's a good general question for the coastal commission. My impression has been that they prefer may and may not. Um, to me, shall is more definitive, but I will ask them about that because that's a good question.
I vaguely remember we had a discussion on that before, but.
Moving on to page six. I had a question on point number two. As I understand it, so the way point two is written right now, if somebody builds a new detached ADU structure, it will not be required to install a fire sprinkler system if the primary structure does not. So the new building would not have to meet current codes? I'm not reading that properly because I guess my.
Except for fire sprinklers, yes.
My life safety question is I would be hesitant to embrace an opportunity to install something like that. That can mean the difference for somebody between life and death. And new construction is an appropriate time, I feel, to do that versus retroactively to existing construction.
Um, that is directly from the state code, so I'm not sure we can, you know, they must have seen that as a barrier to construction.
New construction is much easier. You know, it's a common misconception that they're designed to extinguish fires. No, they're designed to keep a small one in check and and increase survivability profile for people to get out. Obviously, I have a best perspective or a happy perspective on this issue, and it's seen to make a difference both directions.
Yeah, let me verify that language from the code.
Anything else on page six?
Yeah, uh, uh, very quickly on item three there below what you were just referring to. Um, I certainly understand that. Um, except that I just wonder if it is it necessary maybe to say something regarding that any power connections between the two uh, buildings, uh, need to be undergrounded or in some way sealed, or I I don't know exactly whether that's that's a big deal or not, but I just would hate to see somebody routing cables across between two roofs just to comply with the requirement.
Or if that's a code, maybe that's a code thing.
That comes up later, I think, on page seven.
Underground requirement.
Utilities for detachment you shall be installed underground if.
Well, yeah, I I understand that.
But I guess between, like on Underwood, they're not underground, and if you did it between buildings.
That'd be the deal, but, you know, just for the setting.
No, but yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
We'll look into that. And I wonder if, well, there's a, there's a Solar Rights Act, too, where people are, you can't require for solar panels. But we might be able to have some objective standards in terms of we can't extend above the roof of P5 more than certain.
That's the code. The solar. You have to leave like board for all the way around edge of your roof, including the peak. board for all the way around edge of your roof, including the P.
I do know that we had solar panels that were, because the angle that they wanted were raised above the roof line is causing issues that was on.
That's, yes, like on a flat roof, especially.
Yeah. Forget who it was, was.
I know. We didn't do designer review for dwights, but that, the angle was one of the
Yeah, so where does the Solar Rights Act?
Yeah.
Right, supersede that, right?
Yeah.
I just had a question on the last section, C, under general standards for accessory dwelling units, and just read it enough to understand it, but the exception, you know, you can't rent, that you may rent it separately, but may not be sold or otherwise conveyed separately. And then the exception for the primary, you know, built by, and then it goes on. Is that a requirement that we are just bound by? It was just an interesting exception, I'm just curious.
Yeah, and I specifically asked the coastal commission about that, because, well, wouldn't that be a subdivision that then you know, would, would require a C B P? But no, it'd be like, I guess, like a townhouse or a condo where you, the land doesn't change hands, but the structure, you can sell the structure simply.
So that is, and it's from the state. So wouldn't divide the land, it would just be like, I don't know.
So who pays the taxes? Yeah, interesting.
I guess that'd be, I mean, they must have some agreement with the landlord, where they're going on the land. I don't know. And it's not likely that this is ever going to come up in Trinidad.
Right, it was just, it caught my attention. On the page seven. There are G, utilities for detachment use, I just had a question. So a separate standalone A D U will require a separate meter or not necessarily?
No, detached, okay, now, separate utility meters. Well,
Landlord, you don't care.
Yes, so the idea is you can have separate, you can't, the city can require separate meters, let's see.
Again, I think this is straight from the state code, but it's good to understand these things.
I just felt like it wasn't clear, and it was very clear if it's attached, right? I put one in a garage, it's attached to my structure, I don't have to have it. But if I put it in an outbuilding that's large enough, then I do.
Have to have a meter, okay.
So that was kind of
It says when they're not required, but when are they required?
Right.
Yeah.
Again, they use the word shall.
Well, that's because the state code uses shall. The coastal resource protection code was from the Minnesota ordinance for coastal mission likes me.
Page one, I had a question. Prohibition conversion of all our portion to, you know, converting it back from A D U or J D U into living space, right? So then would this preclude somebody from ever converting it into a bedroom? So I build an A D U on my property and down the road I want to offer it as a three bedroom, is that not? Right, because it was approved as an A D U, and now I want to make it part of the living space of my property, I'm out of the
So, so that is my addition, and that is because this ordinance creates a loophole from designer view. So someone could, yeah, I want a three bedroom house, I'm just going to call it an A D U. I'm going to put in an A D U and not have to go through designer view, I can block my neighbor's view, and I'm just going to come right back to my house. The idea is that you, the reason you get these privileges is for that additional dwelling and affordable housing. And so if you're not going to provide that, then you don't get that loophole. Now, you could convert it back with approval from the city. You could go through the designer review process later and convert it back.
But I'm just thinking the property changes hands, right? Somebody sells it to a new family, who's, oh, my gosh, it's five bedrooms for my, you know, extended family, this would be perfect, an in-law unit, if you will.
Could be an in-law unit.
Somebody for a dollar, you know, to get another loophole.
You don't even have to rent it, you're right. You don't even have to rent it.
I think, I feel like that applies more to J, correct, where it's like attached? And, and then you knock a wall down later. Is that now a sort of a three?
Well, no, because J A D U's aren't, aren't generally any kind of structural additions. So really, what I was concerned about is, you know, again, someone used it saying it's an A D U to bypass the approval process, but really just using it as a residence. But you're right, I mean, there's no requirement to have an A D U. I mean, I know of, I know of one on Ocean, it's nonconforming, so predates the zoning ordinance. There's no requirement to bring it out, so then maybe this, maybe this protection doesn't.
I hear the intent, I'm just not sure it's.
Well, but if someone could come back and request, as it says, city approval.
Yeah, and I, I guess is if they want to live with it, would, you know, if they come back for a building permit to make, knock out walls and take out the kitchen, then they're going to need the city approval. But if they feel like they can live with it, with the extra doors and walls and kitchen,
That's fine.
Then they, that's how they use it.
That's to use.
Yeah.
That seems to use it as a
Yeah.
Bedroom.
Yeah.
That's fine, okay.
I think so.
Okay.
I think that's how it'd have to work, I don't, I don't see any other. I am, I'm certainly open to.
Anything else on seven? No, how about eight?
Oh, and then just one thing I'll point out, the state does allow you to say A D U's can't be S T Rs. I did not include that in our ordinance, because I felt our cap on S T Rs covers that. I did require it to be owner occupied. If you're going to rent one as an S T R. Like, the owner has to live in one of the units, if you're going to rent it as an S T R.
So I had a question on that.
Yeah, I can say that later.
It comes later.
Yeah.
Page eight, I think on page eight. I had just like a comment on the off-street parking, right? So you'd eat off-street parking, and then you go down to three A. I just pulled up, you know, Google Maps here, and the entire city is within one half mile walking distance from what I'm seeing. Virtually, not the entire, but the bulk, I mean, one half mile from the bus stop across from Trevon extends down to State Beach.
It's walk, it is walking distance, not as the crow flies.
Okay.
Do you have to do all the?
I got you, the mapping, okay, sorry, that's right.
And again, it's a state standard, kind of is what it is. But, but we should, I mean, you know, in terms of implementing this ordinance, we should map that.
Yeah.
And just, just to make sure I understand the definition of what's a car share vehicle?
Some, some of these state standards are not well thought through. I, I think they have, but, because I was like, I mean, with a platform like Turo, it can be anything, it can be any car, that's a, it appeared. But, no, I, I think they have defined it as like a permanent spot, like a zipcar lot, where you
so the state has clarified that's which again is never going to occur in Trinidad, I don't think.
Yeah, I'll be in time soon.
Or, you know, historic history, you know, it's like, well, do I leave that in there, which Trinidad doesn't have a structure search, well, a state, maybe it will someday.
Right, page nine.
Okay, I'll just, the, under K two, A D U shall be rented in terms, for terms of at least thirty days and shall not be used as an S T R unless the primary dwelling is owner occupied. I guess I'd like to get a little bit more clarity on what that means. I mean, someone could say it's owner occupied, but could be away six months of the year, and their permanent residence is still that location.
That's a good point, and I believe we defined that in our S T R ordinance, so we can use that language. If you guys want to keep that requirement. Again, the state allows you to just say no S T Rs immediately, period, if you want to go that route. I didn't think that was necessary, but.
Well, I don't think that that's even, I mean, that's not the case here in Trinidad.
True, for, yeah, for existing A D U's, yeah, there are some.
Right.
But this would be A D U's creative address ordinance.
Okay.
Comment, I had a similar thought on that, that it's kind of a separate standard from what we have in place currently, and just making, I'm not sure that's where I want to go necessarily, to try and track which was pre, which was post. Because we have, you know, examples where somebody owns a property that has a house in the front, they rent full time, and then in the back they have an S T R that they also have a license for, they rent this. You know, I, I don't know, you know, I mean, it seems like we're allowing the ability maybe for an A D U someday to convert to an S T R, right?
Only if they can get a permit.
If they can get a permit, so then why would we then give them a different standard that they then have to live in it when somebody else that has an S T R permit doesn't have that same requirement? Just because it started out, life is an A D U.
I, you know.
I, I don't know, it's just, I think that's
Well, I'll lay it to you, using these, this A D U ordinance to create.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
And I guess once
Yeah, out of our sort of speak, right?
So, you know, a, a nonconforming A D U, so pre-existing nonconforming A D U, wouldn't be subject to that. But it could be confusing, I mean, I don't have a problem not, I mean, taking that out, it was kind of a compromise between state code, most ordinance, most ordinances say no S T Rs. And so I thought this was kind of a compromise, but you could leave it totally open, I don't, I don't have any issue with that. I mean, I guess.
I think I think we cert, I think we certainly need some, some public input on that, but I, I could also see the argument, in fact, I'll make the argument that the, the purpose of the legislation is to create affordable housing. And, you know, building an A D U that you can turn into an S T R does not create affordable housing.
Yes, and that's exactly why the state allows that restriction, yeah.
So why create a double standard was the question, I think, I mean, that's exactly why, right? The, the intent of the law is to create affordable housing.
Well, only, I mean, yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct. I mean, and I, I understand that, I guess we'll just have to figure out some way that we grandfather in existing A D U's as S T Rs.
It's S T R eligible, right?
Or S
Yeah.
T R eligible, I guess, well, I wonder if, I wonder if we could say, well, that would be a little bit Yeah, and, and I agree with Chris, I think public input would be very useful.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, this would be a good one to maybe highlight in the email newsletter. And put out another, I might have put out a notice, you know, posted a notice when we originally reviewed it, and I'll put out, put up another one. As well, we have to do that anyway at some point, but, yeah. And, well, apparently the city's new website is going live.
Soon, it's, yeah.
Like Friday.
Early July, it's live, yeah.
So hopefully there's a nice way for announcements that we can easily add things like this to.
With announcements, right?
Would it be, would it be feasible to say something like, any ministerially approved A D U could not be an S T R?
That's one way.
Put that in the parking lot for solutions, right, for this? Back to this, right?
Once again, that's a very, very small portion of the city.
Yes, yes. But again, that's sort of that, if you get this streamlined process, then you get that limit.
Yeah, but no, I do, I do appreciate the intent of keeping affordable housing available, you know, as you know, we, when we lose that, it's not great for our long-term sense of community, in my opinion. Just a quick question on the A D A requirements for newly constructed first floor, what is the definition of newly constructed? Is that, if, if somebody takes an existing building and puts an A D U within that footprint, is that newly constructed? Or is that, you know, what is that, so just kind of? Page ten.
I just wanted to clarify, G two. Food preparation, I, I think it's just a little awkward wording, but I, I understand, I think, what it says. Let me, correct me if I'm right or wrong. Food preparation appliances can only be one hundred and twenty volts, is that what that says?
Yes, and I believe that's from, from the kitchen policy, so that's a wet bar.
Or natural propane gas, right?
No, it's, we got to say it can only be one hundred and twenty volts.
Yes.
But it doesn't easily read that.
It doesn't
Okay, okay, yes, but yes, that is the intent, that it, that's the intent that it not be gas, and let's
Okay, because I, my question was, I, so then electric two forty is out, but a hundred percent propane would be in?
No, that's not the intent, I, and let me just check the wording. That's where I got this. I, I must have gotten that from another ordinance, but, yeah.
I, I don't, I, 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 I don't have any problem with that intent of keeping everything electric. Just not absolutely convinced that a prohibition on two forty is correct.
Yeah. Is there any rationale to that?
Well, okay, so.
The ability to put a full-size oven in?
Yeah, so I think the idea, and I, I'll have to look at the state code again, because I think the state code does not specify this. What I'm hoping is that the county is, should be updating, is supposed to be updating their septic regulations. And what I've talked to them a little bit about, and they've seemed open to the idea, is that a J A D U would not require the septic upgrades as for a second unit. Because of the kitchen, and because in a J A D U, you're not, you know, it's going to be more like college students who are going to be cooking full family meals, so you want a smaller kitchen. So that's sort of this, that I'm hoping that J A D U's are going to be something that's not going to require septic upgrades. But I should, because I don't think that is the state code. You know, I think, I think previously, when the state first started including J A D U's, didn't have a kitchen at all, like, you basically just put a a different kind of lock on a bedroom door, and then they could have microwave off later. Not sure you're A D U. I think they've expanded a little bit.
Yeah, I right now, I mean, when, when you think about it from a safety standpoint, the worst thing you want is a hot plate. And, and so that would limit you to basically a microwave or a hot plate. And, and what?
Airframe.
Okay.
Insta-bug.
Yes, you know, not to quibble, but, you know, if you have any sort of permanent Oven there, you probably want a duction. And you can't, you can get the little portable ones, but, um, and they may be the right thing, but you can't get an oven that. Or a cooktop. I mean, oven, I mean, a cooktop.
Yeah, I mean, well, I, so going back to what you were saying about the potential. Need for not, the need for septic upgrades with JADU potentially not being a thing anymore. I mean, I guess that fits like number one of this drain line requirements, but like. Besides if someone stove doesn't necessarily correlate to their water use.
No, it's really more that. Food waste going down that sink is. More detrimental to a septic system, and so that's why they require bigger septic systems if you've got. Two units, because you've got two families cooking, and so the idea is if you have a stove, you're cooking more. That doesn't necessarily mean, even if you're eating out all the time, you're not washing your food guns. And, and, you know, it could just be. If you have the full kitchen, then you have to have the OWTS, and if you. Have this, you don't have to, so we don't necessarily need to dictate. That by this definition, it can just be. Well, I don't have to upgrade my septic system if I don't include a stove, sweet. Yeah, I don't know how that's gonna look like, but maybe that's, maybe that's the route to go, that you don't limit it here. Someone can choose to limit. That was kind of the idea is that. JADUs. Cause when JADUs are carved out of existing habit, living space, habitable space. The coastal commission, and you're not adding a bedroom, coastal commission doesn't actually require, doesn't consider that development.
In essence, you could be converting an existing bedroom into the JAD, right?
Yes, that's, that's basically.
You're not increasing the bedroom intensity.
Have to, basically, you have to convert a bedroom.
Right.
As part of your ADU, so you're not, you don't have a next thing. Coastal commission doesn't care about kitchens, and apparently the health department doesn't either if they're not two units, you can still have two kitchens. In the single family, well, because with the babies. I mean, that's a. If your cottage. You're cooking as a cottage industry, that's potentially known. Yeah, yeah, I don't know. But if you, I think if you, if you actually have a cottage, so. There are two hundred for cottage industries, um, and canned, canned goods is one of those things you can do, but I still think you have to have a health department to that one.
Yeah, home kitchen, I think there's criteria to that. Kind of at the end of the kitchen section. Can somebody point me to where we specify what the requirements for an ADU as far as the kitchen are? Cause I see them very clearly stated for the JADUs, but I, I cannot put my eyes on it in here.
It doesn't, I mean.
So an ADU could have no kitchen?
Well, I think a dwelling unit is defined as having cooking facilities.
Okay.
Which could be a miracle.
I don't know, I just, I looked for it a couple of times and I, I don't. I couldn't.
Yeah, I don't think there's a standard for it, that you have to have a kitchen, and what is a kitchen?
Okay.
I don't know.
Oh, oh.
We spent a lot of time on the definition of a kitchen.
Struck me as a.
Yeah, I mean, it's. I don't know that we need to define what a kitchen is, I mean. Anyone who builds an ADU without a kitchen is going to struggle to find a tent.
Cause I get someone who builds an ADU without a parking space on Wagner Street where they have to walk down, might have some trouble too. Oh, I'm sure that's.
But I mean, the, the way we've defined an efficiency kitchen here is under, uh, letter G. It says it includes a cooking facility with appliances. So that suggests nothing's built in. And a food preparation counter and storage cabinets. So, um. In, in that context, then the 120 volts should stay the way it is. Things built in. It's built in, we defined it as, uh, with appliances. As well, now that I think about appliances.
Appliances could be.
Could be built in, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's another one to think about.
All the best. All right, page 11, if there's nothing else on 10. 12. 13. 14.
I had a, a comment on the. Illegal ADU section regarding the three-year grace period to. To get permitted. I guess. Like, like, again, those things that's difficult to enforce, um. Do we want to include, um. A line in there for change of ownership in that three-year period, like if somebody doesn't. Bring their illegal ADU. Into performance in the first two and a half years, sells the property, the new guy gets it. Got.
Six months.
Six months to deal with that or something, I mean. Maybe that's just the way it is. That's something that I was thinking. Give the new guy. A year or something. The texture.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's just not, not actually.
I mean, I think we could leave it as it is, and it's just tough luck, I guess, when they buy the place, they should dispose if that's the case. Uh, you could, you could write in here if the property changes hands, the new owner will have. Whatever period of time. Uh, or you could write in an extension can be given in special. There's probably one or two.
Would it be problematic if there was some language to? Amount of time after the city becomes aware of, or it be, you know? That would then kind of capture.
But that doesn't necessarily fix the problem on them, the city might be aware of it, and then they still sell. Property into an.
I, I sort of think it's already, well, the three-year grace period.
Is based on when the city is aware of it.
I don't know when else it would be based.
I think it's from when this ordinance was adopted. So if in five years the city discovers you're illegally ADU.
Yes.
Immediately get an enforcement.
And I. I guess the, the, the scenario is you buy a property, there's a tenant pre-existing, you've got no problem, they're part of the transaction, they, in essence, transferred through. And then down the road, five, 10 years, all of a sudden you become aware that it's illegal, now you're, it's, it was never illegal, non-performing. Now you're stuck. Is there an option for appeal or, I don't, that was kind of the one scenario that occurred to me. Where it would be problematic and potentially not, it, it, I don't know.
I mean, there's a lot of illegal ADUs wrapped, right, that's like definitely going to come up.
Well, I guess, really. So if an illegal ADU is not registered within the time frame, then they have to get a long, long after. So really, all the three-year grace period is, is you avoid the, the whole.
It's a penalty, which is.
Penalty. Is, is really all it does, I think.
Because if it's, if it's, um. You're saying that then the homeowner shall apply for after-the-fact permit, so then you just go through the permitting process.
And you pay the fine.
Right.
So that's really all it is, and maybe it could be simplified. This is, this was actually in the old 2012 ordinance, and I. I don't know where it came from, I mean, I. Wrote that ordinance, but I used somebody else's ordinance, and I, I haven't seen anything like that in my.
To refresh myself, we set the after-the-fact as double, correct? And that's not insignificant when it comes to the building permit for, I, I don't know, I'm just.
Construction, probably. I don't know.
I guess I'm trying to imagine, so you inherit this illegal ADU, right? And you're trying to do right, but you've missed the window because you didn't know or whatever. Was that building permit? Fee comprised of what it would have cost to have converted when you, when it was done, or how, how was that?
Building penalties are based on the costs of construction.
Right, do you, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
How do you calculate that? How does the building inspector determine that? Say it's dollars, it's this amount, we're trying to. Engage in compliance, you know, and conformity, create people, encouraging people to come into compliance. I don't know, just to.
Yeah, I don't know how or why anyone would want to even. Disclose it.
Right. With the whole purpose, I mean, as I see, building inspection is life safety issues, right? It's really, yes, not a moneymaker.
Yeah.
It's, it's a life safety issue, in my opinion, but.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. Something else to think about, I guess.
You said this is from the 2012?
Yeah. Oh, the city adopted it, but it was never certified by the coastal commission, I was. I need to look and see if the city actually rescinded the ordinance or not, um. It's, it's on the city's website. But so is the BD, the original BDU ordinance, and I know that one's recently. I should look into that one, so the city adopted it, it wasn't certified, so it's not in effect, but the city should rescind it if it was adopted.
And while we're still trying to clarify this whole thing, uh, paragraph B at the bottom there, I, I think there's just some wording issues. It says, "Any illegal ADU that cannot meet the standards of this chapter, the certified LCP, and other applicable regulations shall not be utilized as an ADU." Never mind, I can understand that, okay, it was just an awkward wording in my mind, okay.
Anything else on 14? 15. 16.
Oh, the. I, I save this as a PDF instead of printing to a PDF. Printing to a PDF preserves the track changes, saving it as a PDF does not, I noticed the track change will be not served.
Right, okay. Cause you had a, a staff report that you. Thought for the flexibility, I figured that was.
Yeah, no, um, so for. For 17, 28, 120, E is added, um.
What page are you on, Trevor?
Uh, page 15.
Page 15. He is.
He is named. Um, in 17, 28, 50, um. The plus one ADU and one JD, we, uh, subject to requirements, so the, the second half of that is named.
At which one again, I have to see it at the bottom of the page?
No, the, the middle, the middle maximum, well, both maximum densities, it's the same.
Oh.
Plus one.
It's, it's the same for both, plus one ADU, that's added.
And just to understand the match density, so. So we could occupy it at home, have a JADU, and then additionally have an ADU on the same parcel, right? Okay.
I mean, not likely in Trinidad.
But conceptually, that's the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, now there are other provisions for multi-family. dwellings that I didn't include here, and, I mean, I can't imagine that actually coming up and, I mean. The fourplex, the, the, the only multi-family, the, the triplex, the fourplex. They already don't accept the requirements, they're not going to need to. To add. Something's. And I guess there's some. No one's brought that up, I didn't include their.
Turn it into, uh, low-income housing.
Well, I mean, we've talked about like senior housing, kind of like little senior village. I think, sure. Um. So yeah, basically, that's the changes is, oh, and then for PD, in the PD zone. Currently, there's no principally permitted uses, so I add a JADU, a new section for principally permitted uses, so that whole section's. That's on page 16. 17, 36. And final, that'd be a brand new section. The density. Again, I just added the one ADU and one JD.
But this, could you, can we, because we're gonna see this again, right?
Yeah.
Next time with the track changes, and then just, because I'm already kind of losing track of.
Yeah.
If that works for anybody else, that's, yeah, okay. All right, with that, I'd like to open up to public comments on item 3, the AD ordinance. That'll be in the room and nobody online. See any hands going up or unmuting? All right, back to us, again, this was just kind of advisory information, right, Trevor? Okay.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, do some research on, on some of these questions, these are really good questions, again, it's a, it's a complex ordinance and. You cite some, some things and it's hard to think everything through, so this was really good, um, and I'll bring some questions to the coastal commission next week. And, um, in the meantime, I'll work on some with.
All right, now item six. Oh, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got, uh, I think a purely theoretical question, which is that once this ordinance does eventually, I mean, you know, become in effect. Should other statutes be revisited? And I'm thinking, you know, for example, I mean, there's not a ton of new construction planned in Trinidad, but should. Design review of new projects consider the potential to direct, you know, a purely theoretical ADU? Since that would have effects on overall bulk and Florida lot area ratio and views, et cetera. I guess the, the broader question is if, if a goal is to preserve coastal character of the town, and we're subject to this strict AD ordinance. Can the primary residents be somehow regulated sort of in lieu of an ADU?
Yes, um. We will be working, I mean, we are working on a comprehensive update of everything, um, but ye- yes, and it's good to look at these things, not in just this ADU bubble. Um, I do think that when we worked on the. New design guidelines, the draft design guidelines, I think we had ADUs in mind, I think there's some provisions for ADUs in there. Um, but ADUs are not. They are not subject to density or lot coverage requirements, um. Really, it's just septic is, is again, a limiting factor for them. So. Yeah, yes, I mean, we'll be revising the design review guidelines anyway, um. Not in the distant future, but something to think about.
And I guess just to, just to clarify, except I was kind of rambling, my question is whether. Primary residences can or should be, you know, considered. When there's, I guess. If the potential for adding an ADU should be considered when permitting a primary residence. In other words, the ADU wouldn't be regulated since it is indeed, you know, uh. Not subject to those things you just mentioned, but the primary residence is, so can the primary residence be regulated even when ADUs cannot be?
So you're suggesting, Chris, that, uh, an empty lot, that someone's gonna build a new building? ADU potential of that design? Is that what you're, you're getting at?
I mean, I think so, I don't know that it should be, but it's, uh, I don't know to what extent, like the floodgates will open, uh, once the ordinance becomes in effect, but it's, it's. I think that's theoretical. You know, um, building of an ADU should be considered or could be considered. When, uh. When, you know, during design review of a, of a primary residence, that's all just, again, sorry, sort of a long and rambling thought, but. You know, there's gonna be a lot of people who want to do what they can to preserve the, the coastal character of Trinidad. The coastal character of Trinidad, and I think that regulating primary residences might be one avenue for. Potentially discouraging A D U's, but, you know, it's a, it's a future discussion, I suppose.
Where though, in tonight's package, there is some. Requirement for design review such that the A D U matches the. Uh, materials, colors, et cetera, so, um, I mean, that might cover what you're referring to.
But I think, or maybe, Chris, were you saying like you might. Limit the size of a primary unit or limit where a primary unit is on the lot with the idea that. They could potentially build an A D U?
Yeah, I don't know to what extent that's actually, you know, realistic or might realistically happen, but it's, it's worth considering, I guess, in. This, uh, this ongoing series of discussions.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it'd be tough, cause you know, A D U's can be attached, should be attached, so. Planning on what someone could do might be difficult, but.
Uh, I guess my thought is like. You're, uh. Asking to permit a three bedroom house, but you permit a four bedroom septic system. And, and then so it's like greenlit, ready to roll.
You could do that. You could do that.
Well, that happens all the time.
It happens all the time, but that's certainly, yes, you can do that. Uh, now though, you know, I, I have had inquiries, like someone. Um. Had to repair their system. And it was a three bedroom house, so like, what can I do a four bedroom repair? And I said, no. Cause you have to have a coastal development permit for that.
Okay, yeah. But I was thinking of initial construction.
Initial construction, where you did get the coastal development permit, sure, you could. Yeah, you could put in a five bedroom system and a three bedroom house and say, I might wanna add on in the future.
Yeah, that, right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the house that I used to live there on.
Oh, that has an oversized system?
Might have a second unit.
Does. Kind of, sort of, maybe.
Kind of, sort of, maybe, yeah. That, that was the impression I got when I was for sale.
Yeah.
Definitely the impression.
Uh, I did have one other question I found, uh, that I scratched on the cover page of this item. Does our private view shed, uh. Ordinance. To precede the building height requirement for an A D U, so we, we protect private view sheds in the city? No?
Yeah. Cause the coastal, now the coastal act protects public view shed, so if we could make an argument that. A public view shed would be negatively impacted, uh. That would be a coastal act issue, but no, private views are not, and I, I'm curious, I mean, there are very few communities. That actually protect private views, but there are a few, I'd be interested. There, you know, some of the wealth. Some of the, some of the wealthier communities, and some of those are fighting, trying to fight the state on some. But, you know.
Okay. Right, uh, then with that, now we'll move on to commissioner reports.
Buddy, how are you?
I'm attending the August meeting. Or he is in, or otherwise.
The only thing I'd add is that, um. There is an upcoming water advisory committee meeting being scheduled probably about the end of July, so I'll be taking our stuff there. If anything else pops into your brain that you want me to. Ask, feel free to send me the email.
It's, I will just mention, uh. I. Um. I'm the community advisory. Committee's Trinidad representative for R C E A. And so if, um. Anything you wanna take back to R C E A as either. Then commission or something like that, uh, that's what I'm supposed to do is. Just communicate about those kinds of things and. To come back to R C E if, if required.
All right, uh. On to the staff report then. Trevor, anything else that you haven't told us about?
No, um. You know, I think as I've mentioned before, my focus through August is the S B two and leap grants, um. And then. Um, I will be transitioning to. L C P grant and REAP grant. And there's a little bit of O P C grant in there as well, and.
I, I don't, I don't have any, um, permit applications, I've talked to a couple of people about some, some projects, but nothing, nothing's been. For, for.
Um, where do we stand on progress with the general plan? Now, that's a constant question.
Yes, that's a good question.
Focused on our grant stuff, which. Has some impact, but I wanna make sure we're not.
I mean, some of it's waiting to get through this sort of log jam of spending the S B two and leap. Grant money, um, but also. Well, that's, um, so I did just send out an, an email reminder about comments on the cultural resources element, so I do. And I said on there that I'm gonna jump back into that as soon as these grants are done, so I hope to bring that to you in October. And then. The, oh, the safety element is waiting on the O P C outcomes of those O P C grant, which is behind schedule.
You see it's.
So, uh, Ocean Protection Council, that's the coastal resiliency. Uh, so they just had a public meeting on Monday, so they're gonna be, um. They're, they're gonna be coming out with the. Vulnerability assessment, uh, this summer, and then based on the vulnerability assessment, coming up with the action. Plan. I at least need the vulnerability assessment to, to jump into the safety.
Right, any future agenda items?
Can I just, this is probably the inappropriate time, um, can I ask if we're still saving the dates on? August third for a meeting, or if that's no longer necessary?
No, um, that was if we weren't gonna have a quorum tonight. Thank you for asking. So August, August third was another potential date for a quorum for the Davies project.
The only future gen item, just to put, uh. Is, you know, we.
Policies.
Policies, right, for living space, standard conditions. To now record stat and wanna.
Smith Apple is somewhat.
That just comes in. All right, anything else? Any public comments on future gen items? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, buddy.
Yep.